This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to call the Village Board for the Village of Ashwabanan to order for Tuesday, January 24th. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Flukie.
Here.
And Trustee Service.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
...... the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women stationed throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, action on open and closed minutes from December 13th, 2022, from the regular Village Board meeting of December 13th, 2022.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve both those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Before we do the comments from the public, I just want to mention, let's take a minute. We lost a longtime board member. He was on tree board for many, many, many years, and he was an Ashwabanite through and through. And he would, he would drive around the village in his truck all the time, and he'd call me and he'd say, "Madam President, what do we got going on over here? I see guys digging holes in that lot over there. What do we got going on?" It was Doug Santee, and he was a true, true lover of Ashwabanan. So I just had to mention that we lost him last week. So, okay, onward and upward here. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The Board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the Board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Anybody like to speak on items not on the agenda? Moving on. So this is the fun part of my job. Every year, we get to award a Community Excellence Award to one of our businesses in, in the village. And this year, Capital Credit Union has been selected as our Community Excellence Award. So if I could have the Capital Credit Union people meet me down over here.
Right over here. Where, there's big open space.
We have identified Capital Credit Union as our 2022 Community Excellence Award recipient for the Village of Ashwabanan, so being presented today to Capital Credit Union is a proclamation recognizing their distinction. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation for our audience. The proclamation reads, "Capital Credit Union being honored for the 2022 Community Excellence Award, whereas the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Ashwabanan wishes to annually honor an organization or person who makes extraordinary efforts to improve our community. And whereas Capital Credit Union was originally formed in 1927 as Pioneer Credit Union as a part of Northeast Wisconsin, Capital Credit Union was incorporated under the laws of the State of Wisconsin as Kimberly Credit Union in 1934. And whereas Capital Credit Union and Pioneer Credit Union formed a new Capital Credit Union doing the right thing. And whereas Capital Credit Union has more than 115,000 members and is chartered to serve the needs of members of 12 counties. Whereas Capital Credit Union has two locations in the Village of Ashwabanan, one being the corporate headquarters. And whereas Capital Credit Union is the sponsor of Capital Credit Union Park, home of the Rockers baseball team. And whereas Capital Credit Union is a great steward of our community, they have many fundraising efforts for nonprofit organizations. Now therefore be it resolved, with the deepest of appreciation of these efforts in community outreach, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Ashwabanan does hereby recognize and award Capital Credit Union the 2022 Community Excellence Award. Congratulations."
Well, thank you so much. We love this community for, for sure. So I appreciate everything, the consideration. We have so many great organizations in Ashwabana. So, thank you.
Okay. Now, the second thing that I would like to do before we move on here also is I would like to mention that we have a new trustee on the Board. I would like to welcome Chris Atkinson to the Village Board. He took over for Jay, who moved from seven and eight to nine and 10. And we have a complete Board now. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. One of the things that we don't have on here is written communications. I do have a written communication. I don't know if anybody else has an announcement.
I have an announcement.
Oh, it's down here. After the chamber update. Okay. It usually is before. Okay. Number eight, update from Greater Green Bay Chamber, Kelly Armstrong. I asked Kelly to come and give us a presentation. Every year in our budget, you know, we have budgeted money to go to the chamber. The chamber always has some excellent local events for people to go to and, and collaborate with each other. And I sit on the Board, so I asked Kelly to come and give us a, a review of what they do.
Awesome. She said I could take about two hours to give you the comprehensive overview.
No, no.
No. Thank you so much, Mary, for having us. It is a pleasure to work with Mary and Joel and Erin and the whole team. So while we are the Greater Green Bay Chamber, it takes every community and every village to make up this great area. So we appreciate your investment and the work. We do cover all of Brown County, so we work with all the municipalities across the board. And in 2017, I'm the Vice President of Economic Development. I came on board in about 2018. And in 2017, the Chamber put together a community-wide economic development strategic plan. You'll see here some of the things that are represented as subject areas. When this was first launched, and it was over 400 community members, stakeholders that really provided input, focus groups, business owners, CEOs and others, municipalities, to say, "Hey, where do we want to see our communities collectively go in the next five to 10 years?" And so this plan was developed, 11 initiatives originally, everything from what I would say is core economic development, which is business retention and expansion, keeping the businesses you have, moving into entrepreneurship, so starting new businesses and supporting those, talent, talent retention, talent attraction, looking at that. And then the other components, we have alignment and conferences, so working with the Packers and the CBB, which is now Discover Green Bay, and understanding the synergies there, and we can talk more about that. Diversity, equity, and inclusion, because if you're going to talk about talent retention and talent attraction, it has to come with an inclusive lens in today's world. And also transportation and infrastructure. So that is twofold, really. It started out as what you would think of roads, bridges, trains, things like that. And it also now includes our transportation and logistics industry cluster concentration. And that is a cluster concentration that we really identified and publicized, and that we have the 18th largest concentration of transportation and logistics companies in the country. And that's pretty significant. Exactly. And it's very significant. The over 11,000 employees in the industry and growing in cross Brown County for the last five years. It's been the number one job growth industry. And that stems, obviously, you've got Schneider as one of the big players, but they're all growing and expanding. And again, that takes us back to core economic development, which is really about retaining and growing the businesses that you have, because in any community, anywhere, over 80% of job growth comes from your existing companies. So we spend a lot of time visiting with our existing companies across the board. I'm going to go ahead and skip to the next one. And this is our Business Retention and Expansion Program. So we meet with over 160 businesses a year, primarily industrial and manufacturing, but certainly all industries. And what I wanted to just talk about here is what I'm sure everyone already knows, is some of the key touchpoints and pain points for our manufacturers and industrial companies is talent, you know, having enough people to produce the products that they need to produce. And then also the shortage of industrial space, which we can talk a little bit more about. But I also wanted to, before we get into all that, just highlight as well, so as you know, as we're coming out of COVID, we've still had very strong business expansion rates. So we have been on par in 2020. We had 24 existing business expansion projects across the board. I think we hit 28 in 22, and, I'm sorry, in 21, and, and on par in 22 as we close out the year at the end of December in that 26, 28 range. So we have seen the industrial base that we have across the board here in Brown County to continue to be very strong. And so one of the things they really articulated is talent. So we've really done a lot of work to build out talent retention, talent attraction, and partner with employers to help bring additional folks to town, because we need, we need more people. And as you all know, and we know, this is a great place to be, and a wonderful place to have a home, raise a family, if you so choose, and live and work and play. So we tout that every day. And so you'll see here, the map on the left is specifically the businesses that we visited with in Ashwabanan. The, the map on the right is all the businesses that we visited with across Brown County. And I understand you can't really see who the businesses are and such, but certainly in Ashwabanan, over the past two years, I'd say, we visited with over 35 existing businesses. Again, we sit down, it's usually a tour. It's usually understanding what the CEO's needs are, what the challenges are, connecting them to resources, and, and helping them get connected or engaged in ways that, that they're articulating that they need. And so we do that. We also work with the village when we're doing one of those visits to see, make sure that they know that we're doing the visit, and kind of report outs periodically as well, what we've learned, here's what we're hearing. What that does, what does that do, you ask? So it helps to also identify any, any trouble areas, right? Or a business that says, "Look, I'm growing. I need a new location. What am I going to do about it?" And if, you know, depending on the situation and the particulars, then that's when we would reach back out to the village partnership and say, "Hey, we met with this company. They've articulated this. How can we help?" kind of thing, and develop that partnership. Now thankfully, I don't think we've had to do that a ton, so most of your businesses are pretty happy, which is good, and continuing to grow, which we all like to see. So we're going to just skip through, and I want to be cognizant of time. I know you've got a full agenda, so just a few more moments. We also, last year, partnered with other regional economic development organizations, well, in other communities across the region, to do a manufacturing benefits survey. So when you talk about talent retention, obviously, one of the biggest things is culture of the company, but also what is the benefits package, right? It's, it's huge. People will move down the street, move jobs for a few dollars extra an hour. They'll also move jobs because they know that company culture is better, and they also know that the benefits package is better. So we got a lot of questions from manufacturers. What's, what's the plant down the street doing? What's this company doing? So we collectively went across, got other EDOs engaged, and we had a very successful response rate for manufacturers across the entire region of Northeast Wisconsin. And what we found were the ability to identify some of the top trends and the top needs. I know, I know I focus on this because usually we don't have a ton of time to go into all the, but that survey's available if you're interested in seeing the results. But one of the things that was really fascinating in this tight talent market that we're in is that over 60% of the manufacturers that responded do not offer a paid maternity leave. And I cannot tout that fact enough, because if you want all the workers possible, you're going to want some women on your workforce floor, too. So just looking at different things that are barriers. And then we also know, in addition to that, childcare is becoming an increasingly hot topic and barrier for folks. Just the cost, affordability of it, the availability of it is becoming more scarce, and that's continuing to be an issue. So all these things that may or may not have factored into how a business runs previously is now top of mind for business owners. Also a lot to take on beyond just getting your product out the door. So it's, it's a lot. So beyond that, we also added this past year diverse small, I'm sorry, diverse small business manager. So this person's position works specifically on calling diverse small businesses, because the needs are different. One, they're small business owners, and two, diverse. So there's just different challenges that business owners face, especially small business owners. And so identifying some of those and working to connect our resources to make that happen. Additionally, I'm sorry, was that the next slide? Yep, okay. We're good. We're good. Additionally, we've also been working very hard, and I know Mary and some of the team were able to attend this event. We have a large concentration of Italian companies here in the area. And that stems primarily around the paper industry, and they're all primarily from the same place in Italy called Luca Italy. So we started working those connections from foreign direct investment. The amount of employees that these companies employ in the area is very significant. And so we started working just those relationships. We hosted the first Italian luncheon, had the consulate general out of Chicago here, and really building those relationships, so that when these international CEOs, who are primarily based in Italy, are making a decision about where they're going to expand globally, that they're, we're putting this area first, so that they know to invest their dollars here versus somewhere else, a different country, a different part of the country, that kind of thing. So that's been going really well. It's a very successful event. I think, is there one, I think there's one more. Yes, thank you. The other big piece I really wanted to talk about is entrepreneurship. So we have really built out the resources for startups across the board in the last four, four and a half years. We have our Startup Hub, which is a business incubator. And even though it's located on the NWTC campus, it's also the virtual front door to startups. So you can call us, you can come in, email, whatever form of communication you want, and we will consult, come visit with you. You can come to our office, doesn't matter. We'll sit down and go through, where are you at with your business? What are your needs? What we find with a lot of startups or even existing small businesses is they don't know where to find the resources, you know? Maybe they need a loan. Maybe they just need help writing their business plan so they can get a loan. You know, there's just a whole gamut of things and assistance they need. And so we're to the ready with that and are able to offer any startup or existing small business that support. And we do that because we have the relationships and partners in place to be able to help them find and match to those resources. So beyond the Startup Hub itself, we do offer additional entrepreneurial education opportunities. And that's very important, because after that, 80% of your existing businesses, the bulk of that, I say the other 19% of that, is really focused on building your own, right? And you have some great self-built stories here, too. So I think along these lines, sorry, my memory is really bad. The, the other thing that we were very successful with this year is applying for an EDA grant, the Economic Development Administration at the federal level. We're the only entity in the State of Wisconsin to receive an award. It's $467,000 that we have to match, so just shy of $1 million for the total project. But what those dollars do is enable us to build out more entrepreneurial services. We're launching our Tech Accelerator. So if you know anybody that has a startup idea and wants to go through the process and learn how to start a business, Tech Accelerator does have to be tech-focused in some way, but it's a great opportunity to go through the process. It's a 10-week cohorted intensive session, and you really get a lot out of it, and we're hoping that that'll continue to grow more businesses locally. So. And then I just wanted to point out, too, because as we talk about challenges, and obviously this is an overall Brown County future land use map, but you can see the red, kind of the red focus areas are business parks. And you can also see that we're fairly landlocked, right? I mean, obviously, the bay on one side, but everything else is fairly landlocked. So as you're looking at five years, 10 years out, we have to ask ourselves, where are these existing companies going to build their expansion? Do they have room in their current location to add on? And if they don't, what are the infill possibilities within your community, or redevelopment opportunities within your community for those companies to expand at an additional location and those types of things? So that's something that we're constantly working on with folks, to just understand the lay of the land, literally, and how we continue to make sure that we have room. Because what happens if we don't have that space is that I, as an existing company, say, "I need space. I need 100,000 square feet. I need to go somewhere else because I can't find it here." So we just have to keep figuring out what those solutions look like from the infill standpoint. So just something to keep top of mind as you're looking at projects and developments and things like that. I know Ashwabanan is on fire with development, certainly residential, so that's a good thing. We didn't talk about housing. We certainly are having a lot of conversations around mixed-use residential and that. So my, would just say, continue to build. We have a lot of housing needs, so you're doing a great job on that. So I appreciate the opportunity, certainly open to any questions or if there's anything specific, and certainly always the door is open for any follow-up that you would like to see as well.
I would just like to say, so it's been several years now that I've had the opportunity to work with Kelly, and, and she does an amazing job. She's a real go-getter, keeps the chamber going, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation. Like I said, every year at Budget Time, it's questioned, what do we spend that money for? And thank you for coming in to explain it.
Well, we appreciate your investment, and it does, it, it takes a team, and we have a pretty dynamic team. So thank you.
Got a lot of great people in this area.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, now we'll get to written communications or announcements. Does anybody have any written communications or announcements?
I have a quick one. A big thank you to the Department of Public Works. This is the first year that they're plowing the Ashwabane Trail, and I have had multiple people in my ward contact me to say how amazing it is. It's, it's cleared down to the pavement almost all the time now, and it's much safer, much easier to use, and people really appreciate it.
Good. I know Joel and I have a get-together with Natalie from Wello coming up. I don't know exactly when it is, but to talk about the Ashwabane Trail being plowed. I have written a communication. I just wanted to recognize one of our officers, a lady from, she's a DePere address. She wrote a note to the department, and I also got it, for Captain Staven. He did an amazing job to calm her. I think somebody stole her purse, and he did an amazing job and made her feel really good. So thanks for, to Captain Staven for that. I just wanted to recognize him. Okay. Number 10, action on consent agenda. The department reports.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, number 11, action items. Action on Class B beer, Class B liquor license request for Ganesh Green Bay LLC DBA Aloft, Green Bay. Chris?
So Ganesh Green Bay LLC, right now is working with a provisional liquor license, and they would like approval for their regular license. And there is a representative here to speak if you have any questions on this.
This, this was a, just a sale on the, on the hotel, correct?
The prior aloft went bankrupt, and they purchased.
Chris, everything's in order to approve this?
Yes.
All right. It came in front of the plan board. We had no problems with it, so there's no other questions. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Class B beer, Class B liquor license request for Ganesh Green Bay LLC DBA Aloft, Green Bay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11B, action on Class A beer, Class A liquor license, Beechwood Stadium View Hotel LLC DBA Hampton Inn, Green Bay Stadium. Chris?
So Beechwood Stadium View Hotel, doing business as Hampton Inn, it's building, a new building, and they will be opening early May 2023. And they just kind of wanted to get a jumpstart to make sure that they would get approved. So if the Village Board approves this, or grants this, I should say, the Clerk's Office won't issue until they have their occupancy permit, because the liquor licenses, the liquor and the receipts has to be on that premise. And I don't see anyone representing.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're here in person.
Yep. I saw him walk. He walked in.
Okay.
Any questions on this one?
No, that was in front of the plan board, too. We had no problems with it. The liquor licenses will be approved after, after the occupancy permit is, is done. All right, I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Class A beer, Class A liquor license for Beechwood Stadium View Hotel. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11C, action, thank you, Tom. Action on Reserve Class B beer, Class B liquor license request for District Porthouse LLC DBA District Porthouse LLC. Chris?
This business is going, wants to go in at 799 Mike McCarthy Way. It will be a self-serve wall for the alcoholic beverages. Serving of the food was still in the planning stages when it went before Public Works and Protection Committee, but I see Tyler Smith is here to answer any questions. All paperwork and corresponding fee has been filed. Okay?
I'd like to open the floor up to let the gentleman explain what type of business he's running. I'll let him do that if I can. I'll, I'll make motion to open.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Tyler, could you come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Tyler Smith. I live at 460 South Huron Road in Green Bay, Wisconsin, on the far east side. This is my wife.
April Smith, 460 South Huron Road, Green Bay.
So we are, we were, are the co-owners of District Porthouse LLC. A little bit about our background, we both have been, worked with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Greater Green Bay Chamber for years, doing nonprofits. with the Great Green Bay Chamber for years, doing nonprofits, the Alicia Green Bay Program. We've both been through that program as well. We're very familiar with working with nonprofit organizations. So what we're planning to do a little bit more is we will join the Ashwabanon Business District, our association, as well as the Great Green Bay Chamber, and as Kelly spoke earlier, to help tie those together as well and be aware of both organizations. So we'll get on to District Porthouse. So we're a restaurant, and as Gary had said, he had some questions about the food portion and where we're at with that, because we were still in the planning stages at that point. Now, we've had some time to review that and work with some vendors, such as Badger Wholesale. We're working Badger Wholesale, and Pelkin Meats. To be able to get the food in that we need, we will have a 400-foot square foot, 400-square foot kitchen, full-service kitchen, featuring food and mainly Wisconsin food and items, keeping it local for the community. Our goal is to be a destination location. We're looking to do Wisconsin beverages and food, so when people come in from out of town, they can come to our place, and if they like things we have, then we can always direct them to the other local businesses in the community. And that's kind of our goal, is to expand on that. So the wall itself, we will have 60 taps, and they will all be self-serve. Everything will be on tap. There's actually a beauty to this as well. And in a traditional bar, you will have bartenders, and they will come up and they will serve you. They will serve you more than one beer. They will serve you, coming up there, two beers, maybe three. One person buys them and goes over and delivers it to their friends and whoever they're with. In our scenario, it's all managed technologically. So there's a limit to the number of ounces that we put on every RFID card. Anybody who pours from our wall is checked, IDed, and verified with identification. Each RFID card is limited to the number of ounces that that person can have. At that point, such as 32 ounces. At that point, they will check in with an ambassador if they run out of ounces, and our ambassador, our wall ambassadors, our employees, we call them wall ambassadors. They're on the wall, they're monitoring everybody who comes to that wall. So everybody who pours can, has to be checked already and at that wall, so they will see everybody who has poured. No minors, nobody else. They'll all have their, check in their stamp or bracelet that we'll have on them. So when they pour, they're monitored. A good thing about that, too, is everybody has to walk to the wall. So it's another check for our other floor ambassadors to be able to check them, are they inebriated? Should they be cut off? And the nice part about this is you can cut it off in a punch of, basically a mouse click. You can shut off that RFID card, and they can no longer pour. Nobody can pour in this, in District Porthouse without an RFID card in the wall. You walk up there with your tap without it, you pull it, and nothing opens. So our featuring is going to be, again, Wisconsin craft beers, wines, ciders, batched cocktails. So batched cocktails on keg are pre-mixed. They're pre, there's not two shots, there's not three shots like a bartender would do. There's a pre-mixed set number of shots into that mix in that keg, so it's all monitored that way. Whereas a traditional bar, you're going to, any bartender can pour, it's strong, can pour it short, you know, however they want, and this place, they cannot. You're going to want.
Move on.
Okay. Again, all of our ambassadors, every employee we have, will be required to have the Responsible Average Server course and certification as we go through that course. Security, we'll have employed security personnel that are experienced and already have them lined up. Our outdoor patio will be 1500 square feet with emergency exits, and that'll be right on McCarthy Way, right in front of the 799 building, so we're two doors down from the distillery, is where we'll be at in van, vans, fire and safety, one of their buildings. The patio is facing practice field right across from the Rashid Lambeau, so it's a beautiful spot for destination people to come in and look and see and visit as well. Okay. My wife's just pointing those, they go on my list, so I don't forget anything on here. So we also will have ADA accessibility, our ramp coming into the building, one way to get into the building, we monitor it with a gift card and secured, and the RFID card done. And there are two handicap spots will be right in front of the building, coming right off the road. One that'll be van-capable for handicap. We also have an entertainment venue with a stage. We have an 800-square-foot stage for bands and music, and when there is no music, it will be doubled as a lounge area. So like a VIP lounge or lounge, you go up, and you can sit up there with couches and chairs. Excuse me. We also have plenty of room since we have an 18-foot-high building inside, and so the ceiling is concerned, to have bar games and yard games and stuff like that as well. I think that's pretty much it. So if there's any questions on that?
Yeah, what's, Tyler, what's the process for checking IDs? Who's checking them? Or is it, is it like a scan system, or how are you doing that?
No, we're looking into the scan system, but you'll have, every person will show their ID when they come in, and once they get their ID, and then their debit card or credit card, that will be tied to the RFID card, and they will be at that point verified whether they're of age or not. Nobody under 21, whether an adult or not, is going to be drinking in our establishment.
But under 21 is allowed?
It is allowed, but the businesses have a choice to not allow it.
Okay.
And that's just kind of the steps that we took to verify that.
Does that make sense, the RFID card?
Can I just clarify that? Did you say no one under 21 will be able to come into the facility? Is that what you just said?
Will be allowed to drink alcohol at the wall. We will have non-alcoholic as well. We'll have the root beer as well, lemonade, we'll have water as well.
So if someone gets the card or whatever they get once they check in, could they just hand it off to somebody else, and then they can go up and get a drink under their card? How would that work?
They could hand it off, and they could go up the wall and drink, but that's why we have all ambassadors to monitor everybody who's up there drinking will have a stamp and/or bracelet on, so they'd have to have that as well. So if they're carded, if they weren't carded, they snuck in, or whatever came in, they weren't, they're underage, then they would not be able to pour in that respect.
So if, I'm sorry.
So everybody's going to have a visible band or stamp so that these wall monitors can make sure that everybody's been checked to be there 21? Because I had the same concern, you may recall, of the transferring of cards, you know, between I still have that concern, but I know one of the bigger concerns that we had at Public Works, could you go into what you're doing about food and on what food you're going to be serving and how that's going to be handled and?
Yep, so the serving of the food is, we work with Badger Wholesale on the items that we are going to have as far as the menu is concerned, and with Pelkin Meats to get our food in. We have a, it will be another unique environment that we will have no grease, no deep-fried, more healthy. In that sense, everything will be combi ovens and conventional conveyor belts, they're the new cook-through. Now, when the orders, when the RFID card, the barcode will be on the table, you scan the barcode, and that barcode will pull up a menu, you order from the menu, it sends it to the kitchen. The kitchen makes up that, and then they will get a text back when their food's ready, and they will go up to the window and pick up their food at that point.
It looks like your kitchen is really small. Are you really going to be able to have much besides like packaged-type things and what you just explained there? Because it doesn't look like a full-blown kitchen. You won't be cooking there, will you?
Yes, well, we will not have grease and flatbreads and things that you cook burgers on in that sense. These are all conventional, basically commercial air fryers. They're combi ovens. You can cook multiple things, 10 shelves at a time, and conveyors can do the same thing. You can actually cook a pizza, flatbread pizza, any pizza you want, in under three minutes. And you could do multiple at the same time, as you go through brats, anything that you We also have steaks. We can have steak kebabs as well, as I'm working with Badger Wholesale. So our menu is to be determined, but our process is there.
Did you by any chance apply for a restaurant license yet through?
Have not done that yet.
My question that I had here is, you said security, because I know all of the establishments down there have security, their own security at all times. What is your, what is your plan for security?
We have a...
Go ahead.
So we have a gentleman named Jim Tarian, who has done security at many locations. He actually works for the city as well, in the city that the public works. You may know him or not. He has a very ideal methodology, and he'll also go through the Beverage Service Course, because that does teach him that as well. And he has several people that I will interview and have interviewed some already as far as the methodology, and how do you remove people that are intoxicated, people that don't want to drink, or people that have had too much to drink? How do you remove them in order to make no conflict? So it's all about conflict management at that point. Does that help?
Sort of, yeah.
Okay. But, you know, in the same respect with that, before we even open, we'll be working with the police departments and the fire departments to make sure we understand what we need to do for them as well to be able to help them.
Ashwabanon Public Safety, right?
Yep. Because I think it's very important to have that relationship.
Have you do, Jen, have you done any conversations with the Public Safety Department here in Ashwabanon? Because I think the last two names you brought up are people from the Green Bay area, not Ashwabanon.
Sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Pardon?
Could you repeat that, please?
Have you had any conversations with the Ashwabanon Police Department, Safety Department here?
Not as of this point, no.
Because I think the last names you brought up were not local people in our community.
Correct.
You know, the village has a history of only granting liquor licenses to establishments, providing more than just a bar. You know, you're still, your kitchen is just not coming up to the expectations of what everybody else has within the village here. You know, we're looking for applications that may provide places like a restaurant. This is a bar more than a restaurant, the way you're explaining it to us, so. You know, we're having a hard time with understanding that concept. You know, I, I got a hard time with it. I think your, your main objective here is to serve the liquor, not the food, and that's the way you presented it the first time. You didn't do much in modifying your kitchen in order to make it look like a full-blown kitchen. All you're doing is going out to a vendor and buying products that probably can be heated or whatever and serving it. All the other area, kitchens in the area here, they pretty much start from scratch with what they do, so. That's the issue I got with it. I, you know, you can talk all you want about security, because everybody has the same security. Checking the liquor, you may have a mousetrap there that might be a little bit better, but I'm not convinced that's what we're looking for here in the village.
And I think I took that to heart, what you had mentioned the last time. In the meeting was, you talked about the food, and versus now, we, our presentation, yes, we talk about the wall, because it's a very unique, it's very unique to Green Bay. And we've done a lot of market research, we've done a lot of research, and also with the technology company and other operators across the country on how this works. So we understand that part very well. The 400-square-foot kitchen, again, we don't need the waste with the vents and the grease and the distribution like that. That's why we have different technology in place with the combi ovens and conveyor belts that can cook anything that you can cook in a standard restaurant. Any little thing you can, and that's what we're going to do. Now, if we look at our projected sales, it's hard to project sales in a lot of, a lot of respects, especially with a startup. Now, our projected sales were between 40 and 60% food versus the liquor, and that's a 17-page Word, or excuse me, Excel document that's already been submitted to our financiers.
Correct me if I'm right here, Chris. I think the, the food is at the lower end of the spectrum as far as the income versus the liquor. Excuse me, the other way around, the food is more than the sale of the liquor. Isn't that really how we look at that?
Typically, state statute definition of a restaurant typically is really anything that may serve food to transient guests. However, under the Chapter 125 of liquor laws, yes, technically, it's anything of your sales receipts going more than 50%.
Okay.
That's basically what the village is operated by under the liquor licensing statutes. More than 50% has kind of been the traditional threshold.
More than 50%.
Chris, or Patrick maybe can answer this. With the liquor license or the bartender's license that they would require for their staff, is there anything in there that would prohibit the self-dispensary-type thing with getting their bartender license? Or could they legally do that and have that type of system?
It's been an issue, kind of, this has been a progressive, new technology that we've been seeing in other municipalities in the state, that the requirement is hand-to-hand sales of like alcohol. So typically, you think of a glass or a drink for exchange of cash or card. This would meet the threshold, so Mr. Smith's, the plan of purchasing essentially a card does meet the statutory threshold, statutory requirement of that technical hand-to-hand sale, because he's just purchasing it, or a patron would be just purchasing it prior to getting the drink. So yes, legally allowed to.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Just a quick comment. I've been to a poorhouse in Duluth, and it's really fun. It's a really fun night out, and to me, if it's going to happen somewhere around here, I'd rather have it be in Ashwabanon than Green Bay or DePere or someplace else. I mean, somebody's going to open one up here. Something to think about, I guess. If we can get all the other boxes checked, I think it'd be really great to have one here.
Well, I did say the concept is nice. It's neat, but you know what? We got one heck of a problem with liquor in this village when it comes to events. I mean, it's been proven just by driving around, finding, looking at some of these homes, on what kind of liquor they're pushing. I mean, there's a place on O'Naita Street that literally has got a bar set up. I mean, you know, walk around the area and see how many people are stumbling around. And I think that's our biggest concern, and we're pushing an establishment here that is pushing the more booze, more liquor, and that's what I'm against. You know, I, I agree. I could see it being a nice night out, but I can see it being a problem on events.
Chris, or, I'm sorry, Kelly, if you went to a facility like this, how did you feel as far as controls and how they handled it, and if people were being watched and felt like it was a safe place to be and that was handled well?
Yes, I was there with all women, and it was perfectly safe, perfectly fun. I actually think there was less alcohol consumed, because you have to go up, get it yourself, and then, you know, you either like it or you don't like it. You might get a different one or, you know.
So no concerns or problems you saw when you were there or?
No.
And one thing is, you know, you focus on the liquor portion of it, which is very controlled and very managed, even better than a traditional bar as far as the pouring. The average pour of a beer in, across 23 countries, 400 some locations that have pour my beer technology, is 6.5 ounces, the average. So somebody's going to go up there, there, not many people go up there and pour. In a pour my beer location, fill glasses all the way full. It's more of a tasting environment, they're more of a full-glass environment, they're more to sample the things and taste them. Now, if they like one, they may go ahead and fill it a little more, you know, from here to here. Again, it's pay by the ounce. You pour what you want by the ounce. You don't have to drink a full beer. It's like at a bar, I have to get a full beer. They don't have to drink it, they feel they have to. At this point here, they can measure it out. Now, again, focusing on that, we are an entertainment venue. We have an 800 first, excuse me, 800-square-foot stage. We will have bands. We will have local musicians. I have plans, and I've been negotiating and talking with Nashville artists, to bring Nashville artists in, and also teaming with some other local venues that have country artists that come in as well, on a small scale, not on a huge scale. Food, we will have food, and we have a fair 400-square-foot kitchen. So as you focus on the managed liquor portion of it, and then, we are having food and entertainment, which is very important to us as well.
How many tables and seats do you have in here, Tyler?
Right now, our estimate's at 75 tables and 300 seats.
How many ambassador, wall ambassadors will you be having?
Again, that depends on the time of the day, events. We'd probably have three wall ambassadors for sure, and that's, that's to be evolved. It'll evolve. It'll evolve based on what it is. But three wall ambassadors, plus we have floor ambassadors that are walking on as well, besides us as owners and security. So you're talking a dozen people for sure, if not more. But at the wall, where people are drinking, that's be more managed between three and four people.
300 people are gonna be managed between three people?
Between three and four people on the wall. The wall ambassadors that are making sure that people that are drinking should be, or pouring, excuse me, pouring, should be pouring. They've been authorized to.
Talk to me about, so you said that when you get your card, you're gonna allow 32 ounces of alcohol. Is, I mean, but then you have the mixture of beers, wines, mixed drinks and that. Talk to me about how that's gonna work. And then, the follow-up question to that is, okay, their card's used up, now what do they do?
So, the beauty of this technology, once again, is that the wines on every RFID card you have in this technology system, you can limit how many ounces of beer, wine, ciders, or cocktails that you can have. For example, maybe it's only 10 ounces of wine. And then that obviously bounces out between how much, what else you can have. So it's all managed by the type of alcohol that you have on the wall. And you can manage that in the system itself. So now, somebody's reached their limit, they've hit their ounces. So if you wanted to come in, Kelly, and drink only wine, you'd be limited to so much wine on your RFID card and that's all you would do. If you wanted beer, that would change it a little bit. But on the wine, you would not be able to pour more than that much on each one of them. Now, if somebody comes in and has that too much, 32 ounces, and they're walking up to the wall, that's where our wall ambassadors will know. Number one, they have to walk across the floor. And you can see basically how are they walking? How are they approaching the taps? Are they slurring? Are they talking? It's just like a regular bartender would check them today. Except here, we can only check them visually, but we can check them with their stamps and how they're acting as well.
So when you say like 32 ounces per person is what you're gonna allow, so that's for eight-ounce beers. And somebody wants to come and get another card, you're gonna sell them another, you're gonna refill his RFID card?
If they, if we feel that they're not inebriated, they have the opportunity to, yes, we can, in their same RFID card, we can allow another four ounces, another eight ounces, whatever we determine at that point. If we live in another, say, another eight ounces. Depends on, each person's gonna be circumstantial based on whether, when they come up. And that has a lot to do with our social part of all of our ambassadors, because they're talking and they're knowing all the people that are up at the wall and that are pouring.
I can see that being quite a bit of a liability issue, too. Because now it'll be documented exactly how many ounces were drank. And if somebody goes out and has an accident, it's gonna be quite a liability for you. I gotta admit that, because I know Gary and myself had a conversation after the public works. You know, the food thing is a very, you know, within Ashwabanon, that's kind of the precedence that has been set. And we kind of presented that to you at that public works
Correct.
meeting. And I'm, I don't see that you've done a lot of work on that part of it. I'm sorry. I just don't see it. So I don't know that, I also agree, I think the concept is great. Kelly spoke of the place, she was up in Superior. I think the concept and everything is good, but I sure would like to see it associated with an actual full kitchen.
We do have a full kitchen.
Well, you do, but it's not being handled as a restaurant, in my opinion, okay?
Okay.
We can agree to disagree on that.
Okay.
But, so, you know, I think the concept is strong. I also agree with Kelly that if it's gonna happen anyplace, it should happen in a sports entertainment district, but I sure would like to see more of a restaurant environment than a bar environment, so. Well, through the past, we've always considered restaurants that had a full menu, a full kitchen that goes along with the bar.
No, it's exactly what we will have.
The food was the first. The liquor was the second. You know, we followed this practice as long as we've been issuing license for beverage.
I don't know if necessarily the food has to be to come first. And I, Gary and I, I know what you're saying, but I think any sports bar, to them, the beer and the liquor comes first. That's where they're making their money. But I get it. But in this case here, I think it's so far removed, the food is so far removed from the beverage part of it, that it's like Jay said, precedent has been set and we kind of want to at least make some, make sure that we're making efforts to focus on food. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't have to be 50/50. But, now, you say you didn't even apply for a restaurant license yet?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that really tells me, too, that, and I'm sure at the previous committee meeting, that was, the food part of it was emphasized. And for you guys not to even address that part of it yet, just concerns me that it's not a focal point for you guys.
Well, yeah, first, where, what do you feel is far removed? When you say food's far removed from liquor, what do you mean by that?
Well, you're not applying, you're not even applying for a restaurant license and, you know, when it was, when it was a focal point, that the previous committee
Right.
and it doesn't seem there was much really thought gone into that, I wasn't there, but just reading what's going on here.
And again, this is my, this is our first, you know, is our first startup like this that we're doing. That can be done, it will be done. And that is part of our process as we're learning all the steps and all the process to do. So that's not an issue as far as we're concerned. And the food part, we've always planned to have, as far as it was concerned. Again, it's a different concept of food, but it can do everything a full restaurant can do. Any of the other bar restaurants that are around the local area, we can make anything, everything that they can make.
I have a question. Could we, like, maybe like table this and send them back to do some more homework on maybe the restaurant part of it? Look at what they're proposing, get more specifics on what the restaurant will actually be, if they can get a license for it and all that end of it? It sounds like that's kind of something that we're not comfortable with right now, with allowing this license to go ahead. And give them a chance to answer some of our questions? Could that happen or?
I don't know, that needs to be tabled. I mean, they can, you can always bring it back for approval again.
You can. Yeah, there's a number of options. Whatever the board makes the motion for to deny, they can always reapply with the difference application with a more thorough emphasis, maybe is what we're hearing for the restaurant portion, shopping the kitchen, the grill, or non-greased food-based products, I guess. Or could table it with an amendment to the application to send to the board as well. Really depends what the motion is, because obviously what the board wants to hear is emphasis on the restaurant. So I don't think there's been an amendment to the application, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, regarding any kind of, from committee till now, regarding any kind of information for the restaurant, right, other than what we're hearing.
All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to close the floor.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's my question, I just want to go back to, if you walk into one of the traditional bars today, do you see the food where they're cooking it? In a restaurant? In one of the traditional places today, in Doozy's, State of the View, the bar, do you see the food where they're cooking it?
No, but they're always gonna ask if you want a food menu.
Correct. And we will have the food menus there all the time.
Yeah, but you're gonna have them there. You're not even gonna have somebody coming up to serve them to say, okay, here's your, here's your food menu. Now, they can say, no.
Correct.
But that isn't your concept.
Well, the concept is when they come in, when they come in the door.
And I truly understand your concept, because what you're trying to do is trying to keep your overhead down with your own employees. Totally get it. Don't disagree with it. But I think here in Ashwabanon, the way that we've done things in the past, I think it'd be very helpful for you and a suggestion from me would be, get your menu put together, get your restaurant license put together, get all that done. Come back and maybe we can have a meeting separately, not in a board situation where you can go over with staff and that to say, okay, here's what we're looking at. I would also suggest looking at your menu and comparing it to some of the other restaurant menus and saying, okay, here's what we have, here's what they have, to try to help us be comfortable that you are truly focusing on the food part of this.
I understand.
Just giving you suggestions.
Sure.
The rest of that, the whole concept, I don't have a problem with. You know, in fact, after hearing Kelly's comments, you know, I was a little bit maybe on the fence, but I could see where maybe less consumption takes place. And I think you can handle any security issues and ID issues. I got no problem with that part, but I think Jay put it pretty well right there.
Yeah.
I think you gotta convince me a little bit more with the, I'm just not picturing it.
Yeah, and we actually, we actually talked about that as far as getting that, trying to get that menu together before we got here. And we do have many items to do that menu with, but we don't have that put together yet, so.
Another suggestion.
But we do have our list of all the items we're gonna have.
One of my other suggestions that I would say is, is please set up a meeting with Public Safety and review your concept and kind of talk about, and get their input and feedback as to how comfortable they feel with it, suggestions they would have, especially your front door management and managing these RFID cards and doing the checks like that. I think that would be extremely helpful, too. Again, I think the concept is strong, but, you know, we just need a few more checks to be made. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to close the floor.
Second. Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay.
All right, I'll be the bad guy. I'll move to deny the request as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to deny the request for the Reserve Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License for District Poorhouse. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Kelly's a no. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Look forward to you coming back.
Yeah, thanks for taking, who would I, who would I work with to do that? I mean, if we want to do this in a...
Work, come back with Chris again, I think would be, because you have to reapply at this point, right? Am I correct, Patrick?
Yes.
Well, you have to come back and...
Mr. Smith, so the same process as you did before with the initial application?
Okay.
The same process with obviously the...
So just work with Chris, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then D, action regarding the requested site plan review for the District Poorhouse, 799 Mike McCarthy Way. Since the liquor license was denied, we would probably have to make a motion to deny this because the lease states, correct, Aaron?
So there's a couple ways you can go about this. Site plan reviews are, if approved, they are in place for one year. But there's a condition of approval, recommended condition of approval, that the liquor license is approved. I guess, I don't, what do you think the best way to do this, Joel?
Well, Patrick can certainly agree. I guess there's a couple approaches. You can certainly conditionally approve the site plan. The site plan met all other conditions minus the actual licensing for the alcohol. So they wouldn't actually be able to occupy the space and operate without the license. But in the event that if they do come back with a renewed application and get approval, then their site plan is technically in place. You could postpone action on this particular item until such time that an alcohol license has been granted. And then, you know, we would know that and we could place this back on the agenda, recognizing that it was approved by site plan. My only thought would be that the site plan approval from site plan committee is really kind of a 12-month thing. So if the duration of this application process exceeds 12 months from the date of site plan committee recommendation, then I would say we'd go through the process again, if that makes sense. So post-recommendation, postpone action on the site plan until such time that the alcohol license is approved. We can bring this forward. If that exceeds 12 months from the date of which the committee provided recommendation for approval, then they would begin the process again.
That's fine.
I can move to conditionally approve the requested site plan with the conditions until there's a liquor license.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to conditionally approve the site plan review for District Poorhouse, 799 Mike McCarthy Way, until they get a liquor license.
Under discussion.
Yeah, until a liquor license is granted.
I'm sorry, I'm here. Under discussion, if the site plan has changed for their concept, let's say they decide they're gonna make a bigger kitchen area, or they're gonna make it different, or they're gonna move it somewhere else, how does that affect then potentially this approved site plan?
So, the site plan only addresses the exterior of the building, so any changes to the interior would not affect the site plan approval.
Okay.
Aaron, if they would put in exhaust vents that would exceed the height, would they need to come back to screen that? Because that's another one that we have on site plan, is screening rooftop.
That's already in the code as a requirement. So if there's, say, new mechanicals on the rooftop that are visible from the right-of-way or adjacent property owners, it would have to be screened under the code.
Okay. So it wouldn't have nothing to do with the permit? That could last up to 12 months, then?
No, this would just be for that, that's a requirement we have.
Okay, it's the only one I thought of, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, everybody understands the motion? It's to conditionally approve the requested site plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11E, consider, discuss, act on a request from James and Jacqueline Kane, DBA Three Crows, Wisconsin LLC, appealing sewer use charges for 2091 Barberry Lane. Joel?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. As indicated in your packet, James and Jacqueline Kane is appealing a determination made by staff regarding sewer use charges that were billed out to their property at 2091 Barberry Lane on November 7th, 2022. According to Mr. Kane's appeal, the water usage that was billed for that quarterly period was primarily used to water a newly seeded lawn at that particular property in question. Village code does require a secondary or deduct meter for that purpose, to properly measure and account for clear water not being discharged to the sanitary sewer system. The village does not typically provide for a sewer use credit without a secondary meter, especially for situations for like lawn watering, pool filling, and the like. Certainly, the board has discretion to issue a sewer use credit in the event that by act of God, something happened. Let's say there was a water main break in a vacated building and we recognize that all that clear water did not go into the sewer, the board would have discretion to grant a sewer use-only credit for the fact that that act of God occurred. This being not an act of God, but discretionary decision by the property owner, the village typically has not provided credits for that purpose. So with that in mind, under municipal code, the individual can apply for or request a credit from staff. Staff can certainly make a determination under the code based on those conditions. If the staff decides to deny the request for the sewer use credit, the applicant can appeal that determination to the board and the board has discretion to issue that credit. As a reminder, water service is regulated by the PSC, so there are certain components to providing credits for water service. The PSC does not regulate sewer service, and so the board has full discretion as to whether it decides to issue a credit on the appeal for this request. With that, I think the Kanes are in the audience. With that, I think the Kanes are in the audience today, so if they have any comments, I'm sure they'll be happy to present those to you.
Okay, does...
Can I just jump in, Joel, and just add to that? So reading through the ordinance of the board, there's a, the standard for the board to determine the appeal is two, there's two criteria. One, is it fair and reasonable? So the board must determine if the bill was fair and reasonable and/or the refund. So if it's fair and reasonable, there's no refund. Or if they determine it's not fair and reasonable, obviously the board can determine to issue refund. So that's the two, that's the standard going forward today before I hear from Mr. Mr. Kane.
Okay. Any discussion, or would you like to open the floor?
I'll make a motion, open the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Mr. Kane, if you would like to come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Kane and my wife Jackie, we reside at 951 La Croix, and I'm a managing member of Three Crows WI LLC that is the owner of 2091 Barberry Lane, so.
Sorry, I mispronounced your name.
Oh, it's okay. It's good to see everybody. So I'll try to fill in a few gaps here on this topic. So most of you are fairly familiar with the work that's been done on that property. And first of all, my compliments to Katie Lima. I hope I pronounced her name right, because Katie has been just a wonderful resource to us and helpful all along the way from here in Ashwabanon on the remodel of that property. Just a bit of clarification. So we started construction in 2021 on the property. I have in front of you a timeline of events. The bill amount was for $1,363 that I received on, for a due date in December. The sewer portion of that was $733, or 54% of the bill. I was shocked by that amount, so I reached out to here, the Village of Ashwabanon, to learn more. The appeal that I hear today is requesting a one-time reduction and refund of 90% of that bill, because I assume 10% of that would have drained off during our work there, which would equate to a reduction of $659. Secondly, however, I'm also recommending the village consider a change in any policies or bylaws, because I think there's opportunity to help other village residents, because per the note in preparation for tonight, I noticed that there is no seasonal policy currently, if I'm not mistaken. So village residents, if they're doing landscaping work, if they're remodeling properties, have no one residing at the property, which we didn't either, and have work to be done, then it's very useful and helpful to have a method to do that. Now, I understand now after the fact that there's a deduct meter possible. However, during the course of our remodel project, there were multiple village personnel on site, and at no point in time was that offered as an idea, even though we put in a new water line. So obviously disappointed that there wasn't an opportunity to be pointed out that, hey, this would be, you know, be useful to us as we invested in the property. Just a little bit of timeline here. So personnel has been on site over this two-year period. You'll note, and I pointed it out to Chris, thank you for, if you've already communicated that to the board here, but I made a mistake in the timeline, so the 21 should be 22s. So I apologize for that. But in, on June 29, 22, we installed a new water line. From June 29 through 915 at 2022, there was no one at all living in the home. In fact, in the attachments, you'll see a history of the previous water bills that had come through, and the range of those water bills, you know, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't increase substantially until the December due bill. So there's no history there of people living in the property, of which water usage would have been water flowing down the sewer, right? And another point of clarification from the opening from the village, it was a completely newly seeded lawn, of which I invested in over $10,000. So it was sodded, not seeded. And so that sod absorbs at a much greater rate, as you can assume, than the seed, so it wasn't rolling into the street. But it was important, because we sodded in August, that we had to water every day to make sure that it survived. So I assume 90% of that water went into the sod, and we had no one living in the property. And again, I'm not disputing the water bill, I'm only disputing the sewer bill. So again, June 29 through 915, no one living in the home, so that's two and a half months during the water usage period. July of '22 through August '22, the village water and sewer department was on site multiple times. The first occupancy we had was on 916. That billing history, the previous bills were between $12 and $39, and then the $1,363 bill, of which $733 was sewer. When I reached out to the village, I was informed, which has been apparently corrected tonight, that no changes could be made, because the Wisconsin Service Commission governed, Wisconsin Service Commission governed the usage and needs some kind of meters and meats. But when I called them that day, on November 2 of 2022, they said, no, the village has full authority to make a change. So it's my request that the one-time reduction be made. It's also my recommendation that the village consider a seasonal situation. I was also disappointed to hear when I asked about such a deduct meter, that while it's on the website, the comment was made, we don't want anyone to know about it. I said, why is that? It's because we don't want to publicize water usage in the village. So the choice to limit information, and I know you can't communicate everything, I was just disappointed to hear that the choice to not communicate this, whether it was directly for me or not, or for us or not, was the fact that we quote-unquote "don't want anybody to know about" the deduct meter. That's what I was told over the phone. So as I try to look at things, not just for our situations, I want to benefit the village as all of you do. So besides the one-time refund, again, I encourage you to look at whatever is written and communicated, so that if and when someone could benefit, of which the sewer is not impacted, which is in our case not impacted, to do a fair, reasonable, and equitable job to communicate such a policy, so that it can be applied in the right fashion. Just look at my notes here and see if there's anything else that I may find useful that I didn't cover for you. No, I don't think so. So I'll just, with that, see if you have any questions, or if I can clarify anything that I've covered so far.
Maybe somebody at the table can answer. What's, if somebody wanted to put in a deduct meter, what's the, what's approximate cost to do that?
So, so what would actually have to be done is there's a portion of the house that actually has to be replumbed. What generally, where the deduct meter is actually installed is on the outside water spigots. So you'd essentially have a secondary trunk line that comes through the house that would carry the water strictly for that deduct meter, so it would be water that would not be going into the sanitary system. As for the actual costs, I'm uncertain, you know, of what that would be. You would have the cost of the meter, and then also the monthly service charges for that deduct meter while it is in use.
And to add to that, Chris, the installation charge from the village's perspective varies based on the meter size. So a typical 5 1/8-inch meter would be a $75 installation charge by us to have the meter, and then the quarterly charge for that is $24. So that meter, even if it's not being utilized for that purpose, you'll still have those quarterly charges just for maintenance of the meter. And that fee goes up based on the meter size. So I would think on a typical residential home, 5 1/8-inch residential meter is kind of your standard. You could go up to 1 inch. At that point, it's $130 for installation and $37.80 for quarterly charges, just for the meter itself, not the water usage.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Do you have many people that use it? Do the landscapers use deduct meters at all, or?
No.
No?
Nope. We do have some industrial users that have them, but very, very few that actually have it within a residential home.
So how do we get the word out about the deduct meters? Do we have that out at all, that people like this gentleman and his wife would know that if they were doing their yard, they could get a deduct meter? Or is that not really advertised that much?
It is posted on the website, but much like a good portion of our, you know, services that we offer and things that we offer aren't broadcasted or advertised, or sometimes people, you know, have to dig out and find that information on their own.
A lot of contractors are well aware of deduct meters. They should be telling their customers about it, especially for pool fills. Permanent irrigation should be looked at, to have a deduct meter to cut that sewer cost down. I'm assuming you did not speak with your general contractor on a deduct meter, or have a discussion about that?
General contractor wasn't the landscaper. I designed and landscaped myself and hired that separately, so no.
Okay.
He was not involved in landscaping work.
Got it.
Chris, do you have any idea how much it would have cost to plumb that? And, you know, just general from your background? Because I'm just wondering if...
I haven't, I haven't been inside the house, but I'm assuming the whole thing was replumbed, so it would have been a very minimal charge to redo it. All it does is separate them outside spigots from the main trunk line. It's usually done right next to the meter. It's very typical.
Are we talking hundreds of dollars?
Yeah, a couple hundred dollars, I would say, would have been different.
So if you had a couple hundred dollars for the plumber and a hundred dollars for the meter plus the rental fee or whatever, now we're at $300? I mean, I'm wondering if maybe a lot of residential people don't use it because of the costs involved, right?
Well, your meter charge runs forever, as long as you got the meter on there, so.
Would there be a cost to take it off then?
That's a hundred dollars a year alone.
Would there be a cost to take it out if you...
I would imagine so.
Don't want it anymore? Say, you established your lawn and you're landscaping, and now you don't want it anymore?
You, at that point in time, you'd be replumbing the house, or at least replumbing those spigots, so they come off from your primary trunk line. So there would be a plumbing charge associated with that, again.
Oh.
How were you watering? What, did you, do you have a sprinkler system, or?
Did not install a sprinkler system, no.
Okay.
It was manual. But just to clarify on the cost side, just based on our bill, we would have been happy to pay our plumber to plumb in and plumb out. It would have been less expensive than the sewer bill.
Well, do we have any more questions for the Kanes? Or you can release them and discuss that.
I'll make a motion to close the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can discuss this if, I was actually, Jim called me and asked me about this. In my 18 years on the board here, we only ever adjusted anybody's water bill once. And we could not adjust the actual water bill, the water portion. We did make a slight modification to the sewer charge, but that was a business, Rich, you might remember this. Yep, it was a business that was closed, and the pipe broke, and nobody had checked on the building, and I believe they had like three and a half feet of ice in their building. Their water bill was well over $50,000, and that's going back 18 years ago. They did make a slight modification to the sewer charge. So the reason why we don't, we don't make modifications to sewer charges is because everybody who does a pool, we have one of the staff members who has quite a large pool, and it costs her several hundred dollars in water sewer charges when she fills it every year. So that, that is what, you know, we have a lot of pools in Ashwabanon, so. Anyway, further discussion?
Well, I've had issues with water. You know, and the staff was good enough to come and summarize it for me, so I understood it better. But the only thing that was left was the same amount at the bottom of the page and a thank you. So I still paid the amount that was due. So I guess it's up to whoever wants to make motion on it.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to deny the refund.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of James and Jacqueline Kane, DBA Three Crows WI LLC for the sewer charges at 2091 Barberry Lane. Any further discussion?
I think the one thing that, and I totally agree with that, because it gets very difficult to us to manage on a case-by-case basis, a resident-by-resident basis, be coming in and saying, well, guess what? I only use this much water, and I shouldn't be charged sewer on this, because I watered this, or I, it'd be totally unmanageable from our perspective to be able to do that. Can I appreciate that it's a big charge for you? Oh, yeah, absolutely, I can appreciate that, but it's, it's just a challenge, and I think we'd be setting ourselves up for failure to go forward. Now, I do agree with your points that we need to communicate better the possibility of a deduct, deduct. I 100% agree with you there, and I think that's something that we can work on and improve on.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, let people know, but I think with the costs that are associated with a deduct also, maybe a lot of people aren't going to take advantage of it, because, you know, talking about it would be maybe another $300, $400 to do the whole deduct in and out and all that, and your bill's 700, so you're getting kind of close to what it would be. So I think a lot of people probably won't take advantage of it, just because they're not doing massive amount of watering that it's a benefit for them. But I think we need to still get the word out. Maybe our building inspectors, when they see they're getting close to the landscaping portion, they're at least letting the residents know. And it sounds like the landscapers already are aware of it, so that's a good thing.
Well, as long as I've been around here, deduct meters have been talked about. It's not a hidden, it's not a secret thing.
Yeah.
You know, and it is posted on the website, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was familiar with it, too. I mean, I knew they were there, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think everybody up here, you know, feels your pain, but it's a precedent that we can't, can't go down that, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11F, action regarding the revised preliminary plat of Three Put Meadows Parcel VA-L202-2. Aaron?
All right, thank you. Let me pull up the plat on the screen, so people can see it. All right, so this is the revised preliminary plat of Three Put Meadows. This is located on Grant Street in the far southern part of the village, just to the west of Sand Acres Drive intersection with Grant. Originally, there were some issues regarding driveway access to Grant Street, which is also County Highway Double E, that Brown County made a couple of changes and comments on regarding the access to those lots. As a result of the comments from Brown County, the plat was reworked into the form that you see before you tonight. In terms of just some additional background, prior to the original plat being brought forward, there was a neighborhood meeting held back in February of 2021, and the property was actually rezoned from our one single-family residential to our two two-family residence to accommodate the proposed zero lot line owner-occupied duplexes. So again, these are zero lot line lots, similar to what you see at Alden Station, where the lot line goes through the common wall between the two units. line goes through the common wall between the two units. Couple other features of the development, there's a drainage way that flows based roughly from south to north right here. This is proposed to be Outlet One, basically to accommodate the drainage way, but also then to allow for two stormwater ponds to take care of drainage from both developments. One pond here, another pond right here. This area is primarily floodway and flood fringe, so therefore it is limited in what you can do in terms of development in that area. The street here, the north-south street, is proposed to continue to the north to an area that is developable. Should the golf course ever cease to exist, there'll be a temporary cul-de-sac located right here until such time if and when that land to the north is developed. So it is meant to provide access to that property. A couple of the items, there are a total of fifty-six residential lots, of which, again, there's twenty-eight structures, so again, split up into two units each, as allowable under the R2 zoning district. There will be a future trail developed along Outlet One if and when a trail is developed basically along the A and R pipeline that you see right here. There's additional discussion as identified in the Ashwabanon Bike and Pedestrian Plan about a future trail along the north side of Grant Street, continuing along the south end of the subdivision plat that would go in at the time, future time, whenever Grant Street is reconstructed as an urban cross-section street. There's ninety feet of right-of-way in that area, so there's plenty of room for it. It's just at this time with the rural cross-section street with ditches, putting the trail on the backside of the ditches would just simply not be practical due to its location, basically in the front steps of the homes that would either front on Grant Street or back up to Grant Street. So again, it would be installed at the time Grant Street is reconstructed in partnership with Brown County. In terms of recommendations or recommended conditions of approval, there are a few, so bear with me on this. Want to make sure I get those in the record. Preparation and adoption of a formal development agreement between the Village of Ashwabanon and developer for approval by the Ashwabanon Village Board. Specific details to include utility, including sanitary sewer, storm sewer, storm pond design, and access from Grant Street, water main, and roadway, including curb and gutter, sidewalk, roadway, street lighting, initial and final asphalt, street trees, following up with design, construction, warranty, and payment. Sub two, process for deeding Outlet One to the village for stormwater management purposes. Sub three, inclusion of twelve-foot wide maintenance drive lane around stormwater ponds in Outlet One. Number two, coordination with Ashwabanon Public Works Engineering regarding street design to create locations for adequate off-street snow storage at the cul-de-sac bulb on this property, or this area right here. We are working with, Brian and I and Steve are working with the surveyor on that. We think we have some ideas that might keep some of that snow from piling up in the residents' driveways. So we're looking at some options for that, and I'm very confident we can find a good solution to that issue. Number three, receipt of proper DNR and village permits and approvals and clearing of the tributary to ensure proper water flow prior to deeding of Outlet One to the village. That north-south tributary does have a tendency to back up due to vegetation, shrubbery, trees that kind of fall in there, so I want to make sure that's cleaned out to accommodate proper water flow to the north. Number four, labeling of the temporary cul-de-sac at the end of the north-south street on the east end of the development. Number five, identification of street names unique to Brown County. Number six, coordination with the U.S. Post Office regarding identification of locations for cluster mailbox units to serve the subdivision. All new subdivisions are required to have cluster mailboxes according to the U.S. Post Office. Number seven, include the following note. Approved floodplain permits from the Ashwabanon Zoning Administrator's Office is required prior to construction, fill, excavation, or grading activity within the revised flood fringe floodway areas. Number eight, include the following note. Approved shoreline permits from the Ashwabanon Zoning Administrator's Office are required prior to construction, fill, excavation, or grading activity within three hundred feet of the ordinary high watermark of navigable rivers or streams, or to the landward side of the floodplain, whichever is greater. Number nine, payment of the park fee of forty-nine thousand three hundred dollars as a condition of final plat approval. And number ten, approval by the Brown County Planning Commission and Wisconsin Department of Administration. Again, I want to stress, this is the preliminary plat for Three Put Meadows, but this is really the important plat approval. Basically, when the final plat comes through, if it's substantially similar to the preliminary plat, it's entitled to approval. So the preliminary plat is where we work through the details and try to set things up for the final plat. If you have any questions for me, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, Mike Andrasco of Mount Associates is also in the audience.
My question, Aaron, you answered when I first walked in, was the issue with the snow removal, but you said that we've got other options.
Yes, we're working with Brian, Steve, and Mike, and Steve Bieda with Mount Associates on that. And I think we've, like Brian sketched up a pretty good option just on the back of the envelope here.
Okay.
Aaron, the big improvement was not as many driveways out to the Grant Street as the original plat that came in.
That's correct.
That eliminated that. And I know snow removal was one. I heard Brian was buying a snow melting machine, so that'll take care of that issue. So if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve with staff conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with staff conditions. Any discussion?
Yes, under discussion. So, Aaron, can you just clarify for me, the last time it came through, there are how many access points to Grant, and how many did we go down to in this development?
Boy, offhand, I couldn't tell you how many there were. I believe, I want to say there were six, eight, somewhere around there. But we have dropped down to two driveways directly off of Grant.
So I think, yeah, I think the original submission had ten total dwelling units.
Okay.
And this is four dwelling units.
Okay, so there'll be two driveways then going out to Grant. Will people be able to turn around in those driveways so they can actually head straight out instead of backing onto Grant Street? Are those designed that way, that they can do that? And if not, can we ask them to do that, to make it safer for those residents to get out of there?
So they are double-wide driveways because they will accommodate two stall garages on either side, so they're very wide driveways, and they certainly can turn around in those if they want to.
I just still have a concern about direct access to Grant, as busy as that road is.
Yeah, I did get confirmation from Brown County that they have approved the driveway access points.
The other question I have is on the twelve-foot roadway, or not roadway, I guess, maintenance road that's going around Outlet One. Is that going to go around the whole entire pond, like make a loop that you can go through and the maintenance guys can get through there? Or how is that going to be designed? Do you know yet?
What we'll do is we'll have two separate access points, one on either side of the creek with a, basically, we'll call it a farm lane, basically is what it is, to loop around each pond to provide access for maintenance.
Okay, so can that driveway, or maintenance driveway, I guess you'd call it, can that be used by the residents that are out there to walk around that pond? And will they be able to access, you know, one side of the pond, walk to the other side, and make a loop and come around? Can that be done?
They certainly can. It'll be dedicated to the public for a purpose of the stormwater management, and they will have public access to it.
So their access, does that go down close to Grant Street so that, where that future trail would come through, they could access that near Grant Street? Or how would someone access that?
The.
If they wanted to walk on that trail?
Right, there'd be two access points off of Grant on either side of the creek. That's to provide access for stormwater management maintenance. So, right, they would have access right off of Grant Street.
Would there be any provision crossing the waterway?
No, unfortunately not, just because of the floodway that's there. You know, theoretically, could you construct a bridge? You know, sure, you could with proper permits, but it would take some work to do that.
And then the access point for getting to the A and R High Line, or not High Line, I guess, would come between lots forty-nine and fifty, is that correct?
So actually, it would come off of Outlet One to the north. So again, should the golf course ever cease operations, you could provide a connection along the creek directly up to the A and R pipeline at that point.
So that there'll be another, there'd be a path built along the creek, or that maintenance road would be used as that?
Correct, the maintenance road would be. And then, at some point in the future, should the village decide to extend that to the north along the creek to an A and R pipeline trail, if that ever happens in the future, they certainly could do that.
So there's no cut-throughs at all anymore through any of the lots getting out to the potential path in the future, if there is one? It would just be through the ponds?
That's correct.
That's through that maintenance road? Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve as presented with staff conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion.
No.
No?
No.
Tracy's a no. Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Eleven G. Addition. Action on special event application for the 2023 Selcom Green Bay Marathon 5K.
Oh.
Okay, Mr. Nick.
I'll just help Nick as he's getting set up. So this is the first special event that is being presented to the village board under our new ordinance and policy. So if you recall, certain classes of events require village board approval of the event. With the Selcom taking place across multiple streets and roads throughout the village, encompassing several arterials and collector roads, the necessity for the village board to approve the permit is being provided. So I think Nick is going to provide public safety's overview on the permit and their recommendations. This has been reviewed by staff in its entirety throughout the entire organization, from public works to public safety to administration. And so we've gone through the process as it had been outlined in the policy as well. So I'll pass it over to Nick.
So how'd the process go?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
How did the process go?
I thought the process went well. The application came in to Chris. Chris coordinated then a meeting with all department heads and interested parties internally. We met and discussed kind of the impacts and the ramifications, also recognizing that Selcom is a pretty large event, and we're certainly happy to have the event here in the community and support that effort, but looking at ways to maybe minimize or mitigate some of the circumstances. And so we discussed that, and I think Nick's going to provide some of those recommendations.
Great, go ahead, Mark. Good.
All right, well, thanks for having us up here. I'll introduce Ryan Greismyer. He is the president of Race Day Events, who was contracted by the Selcom folks to put this race on. This is the second year he's been doing this. Last year, obviously, we didn't go through this whole process, kind of the old-fashioned way where public safety approved it and based on, you know, what was looked at from the rest of the village as well, from the other departments. This is, I think, is probably the largest event that the village hosts outside of Packer Games. We have, I don't know, probably what, eight to ten meetings set up. We've already had a couple that go all the way through up to, I think, a week prior to the race. So there's a lot of communication that goes into effect with all the other agencies and other municipalities involved. It also involves Village of Aloe, City of Green Bay, Ashwabanon, and I believe Touchin to DePere?
Touchin to DePere and Brown County as well.
The Brown County, yep. So I will let Ryan kind of discuss the route and kind of, this is very, actually identical pretty much to last year's route with one exception. We did have to move the start-finish line, which was on Morris Avenue last year. Morris Avenue is going to have some construction this coming May, and we will have to, and we've already, Brian has already made that move, to have the start and finish line both on McCarthy, which last year, McCarthy was the finish. Other than that, it's pretty much identical to what we had last year. Last year was a little bit scary because this is a brand-new course. We were able to handle it with a little bit of help from our neighbors. Oneida Travel Police Department and Hobart Lawrence Police Department and Green Bay Fire all provided assistance in the village, just because we don't have the staffing to put this event on in all facets with EMS and police. The other change that scared us a little bit was the 5K happening at the same exact time as this marathon. Previously, it had been the day before. But we actually were able to handle all of it with the help that we got, with very minimal problems. Ryan is very receptive to any issues and is willing to correct or work with me if we see something that's, we did that last year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan, and Nick can kind of show you what the course is, and ask if there are any questions you have.
Sure. First of all, thank you for having me.
Before you start, can I just clarify something? Here it says that this is for the 5K. Is this strictly for the 5K?
This would be for both the marathon, half marathon, and the 5K, which the marathon and half marathon run the same route.
Same route.
Correct.
In the village.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everybody knows that it's for all three races, not just, because it said just 5K, so.
And for Ryan's sake, I think I pulled up the correct. I have the link for the route that I think you've published online, so.
That's last year's route, but again, it's going to be, the only change is going to be off of Morris, and we're going to be using McCarthy as the start-finish, and it will come out onto, south onto Oneida Street, and then west on Morris, and then from there, it's the same.
Yeah, it'd be just a few minor changes to the route you're looking at there. And I think that changing the finish, or the start to the finish line actually helps. That'd be your call, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly reduces the footprint a little bit. We can kind of tighten up some of those road closures that we have. So it doesn't hurt, that's for sure.
Yeah, so I guess just a real little bit of quick background. This is something I do. I've been doing this for about fifteen years. I work with races, small and large, everything from our local church 5K all the way up to, this year, we were invited to do the New York City Marathon. So it was some really exciting things to see, and that allows me to take pieces from those large races, come to the smaller races that we have. And, you know, this is really a mid-to-large race that you guys have here, something to be really proud of and something very cool. I've been trying to get to work this race for many years, and finally got my chance last year, and on a brand-new course, which I really didn't even know what I was stepping into. But I have to say, your crew here, Nick, has been amazing. And everybody, from Chris to whoever I had to work with, has been absolutely amazing. Sometimes it's not as easy to go into a new village, new city, and work with a crew like this. So I really appreciate the kind of hospitality that you guys give for this. Again, went mostly well last year. I think I learned a lot and found some fine-tuning things I worked with Nick, both before and afterwards, fine-tuned stuff leading into it, fine-tuned stuff afterwards, and really put stuff together for this year. There'll be a common start-finish, so you see that little green dot? We'll move up to where the red dot is. We'll come out and turn left on Oneida, and then right back on Morris again. So that's really the only major change for this year. The half and the full travel intentionally on the same course to limit resources. Some races will have them break off and go separate directions. We do that on purpose to use the same routes so that the police officers and EMS can stay in the same location as the runners pass. And then we'd stagger the starts so that the full marathon starts at 7:00 a.m., half marathon starts at 8:00 a.m., and then the 5K at 9:00 a.m. so we get kind of everybody coming into that finish line. So the end portion of it, which also ends in your village, has the municipality limited on not as many resources needed for as long of a time. Pretty clean. I would like to say it was vetted last year, the way the course worked. I thought it worked very smoothly. A few small changes in some locations of officers and stuff, but other than that, it was great. So I guess, if you have any questions from that point?
I know that last year, you had said afterwards that you didn't have many complaints, but I have to tell you that I did.
Did you?
I did, which of course, they don't know who you are, so they called me, I believe. Some of them called Gary. This, so my dad lives in the area where it ends up in closing for the 5K. And somebody said, well, if he wants to go to church, he can park his car on the street a couple blocks away and walk there. He's ninety-two, so that's not going to happen. That is my concern, is when you lock in all of our residents over here, they need to know well in advance.
Sure.
What if somebody's having a graduation party on that day at their house? So, yeah, I got a lot of complaints last year.
And you said it was mostly with the 5K landlocked?
That is the biggest one. But also, just remember, board, that these streets are, a lot of times, they're shut down from like seven in the morning till three in the afternoon. So that's. So that's Ridge Road and Oneida and Holmgren and, so that's, that's, that's a tough one.
Yeah, Oneida, Holmgren would be closed, like last year we had Holmgren Way closed down until, I believe the race officially ends at 2:00, correct?
Yes.
We had officers there probably till like 2:30-ish just to make sure that everything was okay with, with teardown and things. A majority of the roads are going to be reopened by no later than 9:45 in the morning. It's only going to be the area around the finish in the stadium that's going to be impacted until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. We did try to mitigate a little bit on Ridge Road, keeping in mind some of the businesses and residents. We were able to keep one lane southbound open for the entirety, or I'm sorry, once the 5K was finished, then we, we opened one lane southbound after, after that, so around 9:30, 10:00, we did have a lane open on Ridge Road for southbound traffic.
Okay.
And that's something I think we can do better this year now knowing how it flows is, as you said, landlocked. I mean, if you look at the map for the 5K, you do see that it is a landlocked scenario.
Correct.
But what we can do is work with PD to do a rolling opening. So realistically, you see mile one, I mean, that's 15 minutes in and you completely open up the south half of that course. We can, we can do a better job working with the officers so they know to, as a tail vehicle comes through, open that up so you really only have 15 minutes of closure or landlocked and then that opens the entire inside of that route.
And as the event supervisor, I do let our officers know that if they have, do have a break in the runners, that we don't stop runners to cross traffic, that's something we don't do, but if there is a, a large enough break in the runners or a gap to try to get as many cars through as they can safely. On the 5K route, just because it's such a popular distance and such a short race, it's kind of hard to do that, but at least on the marathon and half marathon routes, once they get past that mile two or two and a half, we can usually start getting a few breaks so we can get some cars through.
Okay, Nick? That's the important part. That's one of the reasons that I dislike having these in the Village of Ashwabanon. They plug up our neighborhoods and they do, and they, and the people can't get out. I live in that neighborhood. I represent three and four wards and that's where your, your running takes place. I get more complaints, how do I get out? I don't, you know, and I know it's good for the community, I don't want to badmouth the thing too bad, but if there's a break in the runners, let the cars through. That's the big thing, you know?
We certainly try to do that.
Because I get lost in it sometimes and they, they don't let you through and that's what you got to make your road, people doing the road crossings, let the people through when there's a break in the, in the gap with the people.
Was there an instance last year where that wasn't happening that you're aware of?
Pardon?
Was there an instance last year where that wasn't happening, where there was a break and there wasn't cars being allowed?
Happens all the time. It, it's how you educate the people that are on the corners.
Yeah, because we, I usually do a briefing with them and make, you know, give them an operational plan on the event, especially something of this magnitude and that's certainly conveyed to them and it will again be emphasized this year as well.
Okay, now what, I missed the time period. You're starting what time and you expect you're going to be running till when?
I'll let Ryan into that.
So the full marathon starts at 7:00 and again, if you look at the, oh, sorry, now you have the wrong, the 5K map up there. So if you go to the full and half marathon map, full marathon starts at 7:00, but mile two is up by, I'm blanking on the bus company's name up there on the corner.
Lamers.
Lamers.
Lamers. So mile two is up by Lamers, you're completely clear of that by 7:30. So, and what I'm saying clear of that, I mean, your last runner is past that by 7:30. So you're, you're coming through, you're clear and you're out. So it opens up the roads completely again from, realistically, if the officers are letting people through by, you know, mid-range there, the first 15 minutes or so, people are starting to get through on a rolling closure. Then again, the next race starts at 8:00, so it's going to be kind of 15 minutes of heavier runner traffic and then opened up again. And then your 5K is a much smaller footprint that will take up the space, but again, mile one is, you know, the entire southwest side of that course opened up in the first 15 minutes. So as long as we work, coordinate well together, officers can cut those openings and.
And I think if we have a dedicated SAG vehicle, which I don't recall if we had that last year, I think it was just a truck picking up cones and officers weren't really sure if that was the last of it or not, but if we have a dedicated SAG vehicle, I'd get that description of the vehicle out or even mark it somehow that way and that officers know that that's where the, the end of the race is and everything's going to be opened up at that point, that would only help.
I can put a vehicle on that with a tracker so you know exactly where they are.
And what is the, what is the timeline for the notifications that go out to the people?
I think during this, the meeting that we had, the discussion was that upon approval of the course, that a notification will go out to all affected residents and then I believe again, prior to, and I don't remember what the timeline was and maybe that's something the village can.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, so there'd be two notifications, one sent out upon approval and then one, two more, two weeks prior to the event.
Could it, could it also be added to that, Nick, then that like we do a, we actually get ahead of that game and get to like Bethany ahead of time so that that church knows how to deal with its schedules?
Yeah.
And also I, when we notify, are we just notifying them on the route? Since this is totally enclosed, I think we need to notify everybody in all those streets and that, is that what you're doing?
So fortunately, you guys have something amazing called Brown Dog, which I was made aware of by Tom Sherman's from Green Bay and I can literally trace my routes and then look at any landlocked areas and it'll highlight that and it'll grab me every address and I just turn that over the postcard to one of your print companies here and then they send it out for me. It's amazing, again, you guys do something I wish every community would do. It makes it so simple, I can hit every address, everything there. Unfortunately, some of them go to California because it's a Packer home or something owned by somebody in California, but it's really nice to see that that happens. So yes, any landlocked area, I normally go kind of 200 feet off the roadway, so some people will be made aware of it in case they're traveling, you know, through the area rather than living on the area, but definitely I think that makes a lot of sense. And as far as the church notifications, we did reach out to every church twofold. One, it's super helpful to have them know and make sure we know of any changes they're doing, but also we reach out to them and try and bring them as part of the community and make them part of our volunteer team because our volunteer teams can raise money for their church or any sort of, if they have a group or a charity that they want to raise money for, we use that as a vehicle for them to raise additional monies for their charities.
Additionally, there's some businesses within that area too that probably need to be made aware of that.
Yes.
Much earlier.
Yes.
I think that's, covers that also by the, the dual notifications upon approval and gives them a good several-month notice.
I, I live right in this, in the middle of this race and then I also have a business that's inside of that box too and, you know, it's a little bit of an inconvenience, it has been like last year, but it's, it's really a kind of a small window where, you know, the peak where if you're not aware of it, you can get frustrated. I've seen people get frustrated, but, but overall, it's a really small window. Once, once most of the runners have been through, like to me, I think the officers in the past have done, and the, and the help has done a good job of letting traffic through and, I mean, things can always get, I think communication with the community is probably the most helpful thing to do.
Well, I've sat there and nobody's around and they would not let me through, you know, and I know other people, same thing, you know, and, and the time they're running that, it's on Sunday, I believe.
Sunday morning, yeah.
It's all church time. People are going to different churches wherever and it's, some of these people, that's where they have to go, you know, so just please let the people through if there's a break, that's all I'm saying.
And if you get notifications from residents that they're not being allowed through and there's no runners, if you can find out what intersection that was, I can certainly follow up with those officers.
Pick them up and put them in jail?
Maybe. King of Court, we got that in back.
Okay.
Ryan, do you also put out signs like along the route, excuse me, along the route saying that the runs coming, excuse me, through there, like a couple days before? Do you normally do that?
We don't here. It is something we have done in the past and can definitely do. We come into town on Thursday and I can gladly put, we just have, you know, marathon, we put the date on it and we normally put the timeline of it and we can definitely do that at like key intersections, they see it coming.
Yeah, I mean, that might help if, you know, if they get it sent to them and then if they see the signs out along the route, that might trigger something again in their head saying, "Okay, the, the runner's coming through tomorrow, I got to get through here before" or whatever. I think that might help out too.
Another thing we do from public safety's end and this is pretty much of any road closure, Haley's real good at reaching out to me and finding out on a monthly basis what the road closures are and we try to get that out on social media as best we can on both public safety and the village website.
Yeah.
Do you guys do anything with BMS boards at all?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion or I'll entertain a motion?
A motion to approve the special events permit for the Green Bay Selcom Marathon, Half Marathon and 5K.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special event application for the 2023 Selcom Green Bay Marathon, all three races.
Does it matter?
And we need revised insurance, from what I understand.
Yes. Chris, did we email back and forth on that? I think Jim said, I think it renews, it's a terrible date for it to renew. I believe it renews April 1st and they will send it as soon as it.
You said February?
Is it February 1st?
Sometime in February, so I, I won't, you know, give you the permit until I have the revised.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working with them to hopefully make that renews shortly after the race because then it's live for the race, so.
Okay.
Okay, and it's with the, like the map that I have in my packet here shows it's starting on Morris Avenue, so it is the revised start, which will be on Mike McCarthy.
Yes, ma'am.
So everybody's aware of it. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. 11H, discussion and possible action on Ashwabamay Maintenance Building bid recommendation. Rex?
Thanks, Mary. All right, this is our second go-around of bidding or rebidding, I should say, for the Ashwabamay Park Maintenance Building. For those that haven't taken a look at it lately, it's basically a metal pole building that has been moved from the old public works site when we used to have our off, our, our buildings on Cormier Road and it's basically put in Ashwabamay Park without a base or anything. It's, it's right on the dirt. Holes in the building, it, it, it's vintage, probably from the, I'm going to guess from the mid, mid 60s to early 70s. It's seen its day. It's a dire need of replacement for what we've got going on right now in terms of storing of equipment, the special events that we're having out there, what we need to be storing in the building, so on and so forth. So we're looking at replacing that building, the second round of bids. First round came in high, timing is everything. We did it later in the year, so there wasn't a lot of options for contractors. If they, if we wanted to build it, we had to pay them for it and, and so this is a better timing situation. So low bidder on this round, we did have five contractors submit the bids, you can see the, the bid specs there, but IEI General Contractors was the low bid at $469. Knowing what the construction costs were versus what we had in ARPA funds, this building was tabbed as an ARPA funding project. We, we pre-put in a, a number of alternates. Alternate number one was to reduce the size of the building to a 40 by 60, which would still certainly serve our purposes. Alternate number two was talking about some alternate frost walls, instead of frost walls would be great on beam. Alternate three was to reduce the asphalt around the building. Currently, we have no asphalt around the building right now, so any asphalt would be good. And alternate number four was a shingle roof, to accept a shingle roof versus a metal roof. So looking at the bids and, and going down from the $469,000, what we are recommending is that we accept the IEI contractor bid at $469, but enact three of the alternates, alternate number one, number three and number four. Those would bring it down to around 365, I don't have the, what's the right number there? 365, 400. We are recommending not enacting alternate number two. We'd like to try and keep the frost wall only because again, we have no plans to heat the building right now, no need to heat the building right now because we were able to use the chalet for a lot of the park and rec maintenance type of projects, which is heated during the winter. But five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, we may want to heat the building for one reason or another or, or change the purpose of the building, whatever may happen and by putting this in place now with a frost wall, it would allow us the ability to do that moving forward. So that's why we are recommending that those frost walls still stay in effect, which means we kind of throw out alternate number two. This was approved at the park, or to be forwarded to you guys at the park board level. However, there were several questions at the park board level. They were specifically involving the roofing. The current plans is a 312 pitch. There were some concerns that that wasn't a steep enough pitch, that there would be a lot of ice and snow buildup on there and it, what did we think of that? So I talked with McMahon, I also called up the president of IEI and what they said typically on a 312, it would work, anything higher would be better, obviously. A 312 would work and usually what they do is they put on an extra layer of ice, ice shield so that the water would not be seeping through. However, they did say a 412 would be better, anything would be better than a 3, a 312, it still would work and extra cost if we wanted to move forward with anything, which I'm going to, I'm going to put back on you guys of whether, what, what you guys think would be an extra, IEI said, I think between $1,000 and $2,000. So again, what we're looking for is approval of IEI as the general contractor, accepting alternates number one, three and four, which brings the price down to 365, 400. And then there's, of course, there's engineering fees, which will make the, the project worth around $400,000. There is money in ARPA, in, in the, in the pool of money that we've got for different projects to do that. Greg, our finance director, did confirm that, so that, that is a possibility to do without, without too much pain. And then really decide whether we want to go with the 312 or a 412 pitch.
Rex, you needed that building a long time ago.
Time.
For you people that haven't been in it, it was scary. I think the rodents even left there.
And there, there's no electric, there's, there's, it's just on the dirt and there's no electricity in it, so when we're closing up at night after any of our special events, we're using our cell phones for lights when we're walking in to put, to put equipment away.
What are you going to do with the zoo? Because obviously that's the zoo now, what are you going to do? I mean, where all of the animals going to go, Rex? You got to find a place for them. You got to put it in a zoo now. I mean, I've been in there and I've seen the foxes, beavers are in there, everything you can think of is in there.
Yep, yep. They like to, they like to burrow underneath the, underneath the ground. We've, we've fell into some of their holes before.
Yeah, you could see the holes. I don't, you know, Rex, I don't see any problem with the 312, Rich. But I, I listened to your park board meeting and there, there were a lot of discussion on there. I don't, I don't know, it, it went way overboard in my opinion, but I think what you're recommending is, is definitely a plus for you. You certainly deserve it to store this stuff because it was a rat trap, I'll tell you. So what do we need for recommendations?
I, I would say to recommend, well, staff recommendation is for IEI to accept the IEI bid.
Well, that's not a problem.
And accepting alternates number one, three and four, which would mean, which would mean we keep the frost wall.
Keep the frost wall. You're keeping the frost wall?
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay, all right, I'll, I'll motion for that.
What about that 412 pitch?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
Let's have a second before we discuss.
A second.
Okay, now discussion.
What about the 412 pitch?
So I think what, what I would recommend is if the board wants to give staff that direction, what we'd ultimately do is we need to award the contract to IEI as the lowest responsible bidder with the deducts as recommended by staff. The change in pitch can be done through a change order, but we'd have to basically do the contract, recognizing that it's going to be between a $1,000 and $2,000 change order. We would initiate that immediately upon execution of the contract and, and just kind of move forward from that. So it wouldn't be a condition of contract approval or anything like that, it would be a change order that would be done after execution.
If you wanted the 412 pitch, Gary, I don't know, it sounds like you.
You know, where that building sits, it gets good sun, you know, it's not like it in the shade or per se, you know, it gets sun all the way around. I, and I, more is better, you know? I agree with that.
Chris, you, oh, go ahead.
You know about this, what's your thought?
Yeah, I just don't like to see a 312 pitch in our climate, there's just too much snow, you get a heavy snowfall, and it hangs out up there, puts a ton of weight on that roof, it definitely takes life off everything. If we're putting frost walls in on a building like that, putting the money into it, I really feel like we should just go to a 412.
What's the additional cost, Rex?
One to $2,000.
That's, now's the time to do it, try to do it later.
Way to go, Chris, give it to them.
Plus, there would be more expense for the additional ice proofing or whatever, anyway.
There would be, too, and, I mean, down the road, that's how you get roof leaks, is by having stuff like that, so.
Right.
Okay, so the motion is to recommend IEI General Contractor as the low bid, accept alternate one, three, and four, and do the 412. Okay, does everybody understand that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
11I, resolution R-1, R1-1-23 urging state to fix the broken funding system. We've been dealing with shared revenues going down for, what did Jerry say today, 30-plus years, so this is just a resolution that the league came out with, and I'm not going to read it all, it's got a lot of whereas, 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 it's resolution number R1-1-23, asking them to fix the broken system.
Motion to approve resolution R1123.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution R1-1-23, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, thank you.
Mary, is there a lot of other communities giving a resolution to the state?
Yeah, the mayor from DePere today said that theirs is going to their city council tomorrow, I believe Green Bay's is going also.
Okay.
Yeah, Alaway is going this week, yeah.
I think the state of the state is tonight, so it'll be interesting to see what he mentions about that tonight.
Yeah, they're working very, very hard on getting a formula that, you know, being on the board, that I've been in several different meetings now, working very, very hard to get a formula that is growing and sustainable, so we don't end up with these terrible situations, so. Okay, 11J, committee appointments, I have two committee appointments, since Chris is on the board now, he can't be on site plan, so Kerry Rathburn is a local person that's in the trades, that is, I'm recommending for site plan, and Cal Curlin was here before, and I am recommending him to tree board.
Good recommendation for the site plan.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to recommend the committee appointments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, thank you. Number 12, items for next agenda, we will send anything to the Village Hall. 13 closed session items, during the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabonan may convene into closed section, session pursuant to ABC, with Ashwabonan, A, B, and C. The Village Board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. Need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. President Kardowski.
Yes.
Trustee Service.
Yes.
Trustee, trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Krieger.
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson.
Yes.
Trustee Flukie.
Yes.
Okay, we will go into closed session.
This conference is no longer being recorded.